Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council vote of the Committee on Finance. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you, Sargent. Okay, good morning. Welcome to today's Finance Committee meeting. I'm Councilmember Brennan. I chair the Committee on Finance. We've been joined this morning by Councilmember Sanchez, Farias Brewer-Williams, Hudson, Nurse, Salam Powers, Ayala, and Carr. Today, and on Zoom, Osay Moya-Hanks. Oh, in the front row here, we have Councilmembers Stevens and Farah Lewis joining us. Today, the Committee will be voting on four property tax pre-considered resolutions. We'll also be hearing two bills, Intro 898 and Intro 906. The first resolution is an amended, is an amendment of a previously adopted full 30-year Article 11 for two buildings in Councilmember Hudson's, Avilas, and Hanif's districts. HPD requested amending the exemption from a 30-year term to a 40-year term after finding a gap in coverage would occur between when the 30-year Article 11 would expire and the maturation of the loan for rehabilitation work on the buildings. The second resolution is a new partial 40-year Article 11 exemption for four buildings in Councilmember Ung's district. Under the application, the building will enter into an HPT regulatory agreement restricting rent, setting aside 51 units for formerly homeless people, make improvements under the HPD's Aging in Place Initiative, and it would complete identified construction needs. Third resolution is a new partial 40-year Article 11 exemption for four buildings in Councilmember Stevens' district. Under the application, the building will enter into an HPD regulatory agreement restricting rent, setting aside 30 units for formerly homeless people, make improvements under the HPD Aging in Place Initiative, and complete identified construction needs. Final resolution is an amendment of a previously adopted 40-year Article 11 for 20 buildings and three vacant lots in Councilmember Feliz and Stevens' district. HPD requested amending the exemption to change the effective date from July 1, 2023 to July 1, 2022 in order to address operational needs caused by the phasing out of existing J-51 benefits and to include an additional vacant lot, Block 2930, Lot 58, into the existing project area. Next, we have our two introductions. Intro 898, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would establish the Cypress Hills-Fulton Business Improvement District. The bill would set the authorized annual expenditure for the new bid at $400,000. Intro 906, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Wan, would expand the service area of the existing Queens Plaza Court Square Business Improvement District, and it would rename the enlarged bid as the Long Island City Improvement Business Improvement District. The bill would set the authorized annual expenditure for the enlarged bid at $2.058 million. Today's hearing for both introductions was noticed by Resolution 412 and 421 respectively, which the Committee adopted back on May 23rd. We will hear shortly from any witnesses who wish to testify. Once we've heard any testimony, we will then lay over the bills for at least 30 days, which allows time for any property owner within their respective proposed bid areas to file an objection with the city clerk. In the absence of any objections filed, either by a majority of all the impacted property owners in their respective proposed bid, or by any property owners owning a majority of the assessed value of the property within their respective proposed bid, the Committee and then the full council may adopt the new bid legislation. In order to do so, the Committee and the full council must be prepared to answer the following four questions in the affirmative for each bid. Number one, were all notices of hearings, were all notice of hearing for all hearings required to be held, published, and mailed as so required? Number two, does all the real property within the district's boundaries benefit from the extension of the district except as otherwise provided by law? Number three, is all real property benefited by the district included within the district? And finally, is the extension of the district in the best interest of the public? If the Committee and the full council find in the affirmative on these four questions and the number of objections required to prevent the establishment or extension of the bid respectively are not filed, then the legislation can be adopted. Additionally, the Committee and the full council must determine that it is in the public interest to authorize an increase in the maximum annual expenditure amount, that the relevant tax and debt limits will not be exceeded, and that the notice of the increased proposed expenditure amount was properly published. Additional information regarding these bid items can be found in the Committee report, the City Planning Commission reports, and each bid's proposed district plan. And I want to give the sponsors of these bills an opportunity to give any remarks. Councilmember Nurse?
Thank you, Chair Brennan. And thank you to the merchants and community stakeholders from the Fulton Street community for bringing this vision one step closer to being a reality. I want to express my full support for the Fulton Street merchants in their efforts to formally establish the Fulton Street Business Improvement District. The Fulton Street bid's mission is to create a cleaner, brighter, safer, greener, and more pedestrian-friendly commercial corridor that allows local businesses to thrive. Many of the business owners are, in fact, local residents, which will undoubtedly help the bid accomplish its goals for the good of all community members, and I am excited to work together with the bid to continue to help address some of our communities' issues, but more so to celebrate the vibrancy and joy our community has to offer. And I just wanted to thank the two co-chairs, Juan Diaz, Chief Samir Sincere, for all of their hard work. I see Michelle is here, Catty Lowell's not here, but I see a lot of folks who have been working on this for years to bring it to a reality, so congratulations on making this far and looking forward to our future vote. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember. Before we proceed with testimony from Small Business Services, we're going to hold a vote on the Article 11 resolutions and those items only. Are there any other comments from any of my colleagues on these items? Okay, seeing none, we're going to call Billy Martin, our committee clerk, to call the roll. We're just voting on the land use applications now.
Thank you. Good morning, William Martin, Committee Clerk, Roll Call Vote Committee on Finance. On the land use applications, all items are coupled, again, with the land use applications. Chair Brennan?
I vote aye.
Ayala?
Aye.
Thank you. Moya?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Powers?
Aye.
Lewis?
I vote aye.
Brooks Powers? Brewer?
Aye.
Farias?
I vote aye.
Hanks?
I vote aye.
Thank you. Hudson?
Aye.
Osay? Thank you. Sanchez?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Wan?
I vote aye.
Carr?
Aye.
With a vote of 15 in the affirmative, zero with negative, and no abstentions, land use applications have been adopted by the Committee.
Thank you, Billy. So we'll leave the vote open for any members who are still arriving, and I'm going to turn it over to the Committee Council to swear in our witnesses from SBS.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Good morning. Raise your right hand, please. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Calvin T. Brown?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin.
Good morning, Chair Brennan and the members of the Finance Committee. My name is Calvin T. Brown, and I'm the Deputy Commissioner for Neighborhood Development at the Department of Small Business Services. I'm joined here by colleagues from my bid development and support team to testify in support of the two bid items before the City Council. We are here to testify in support for the formation of Cypress Hills-Fulton Business Improvement District and the expansion for the Long Island City bid in Queens. At SBS, we are working hard to open up the doors for New Yorkers across the five boroughs, focusing on creating stronger businesses, connecting New Yorkers to good jobs, and fostering thriving neighborhoods. We believe that the vitality of the city's commercial corridors in a key part, is a key part of achieving this goal, and bids have been valuable and proven partners in small business support, neighborhood revitalization, and economic development across the five boroughs. City services, which by law cannot be reduced because of the existence of a bid, are only supplemented through the bid delivery of services and improvements in their respective districts. In addition to our role of overseeing and supporting the city's existing network of 75 bids, SBS also supervises the bid formation and expansion process, serving as an advisor and resource for communities interested in developing or expanding bids. We are careful in ensuring that each steering committee we work with adheres to our planning process, policies, and solicit robust community input, and performs extensive outreach to collect and demonstrate broad-based support across stakeholders groups. Moreover, we are cognizant of the unique nature of each community we assist and aim to empower local stakeholders to make determinations on proposed services, boundaries, budget size that best suits community needs, appetite and ability to pay assessments. While we always impart strong planning principles and share our data and best practices across the bid network, when working with any bid formation or expansion effort, we recognize that the power and effectiveness of bids rests in their unmatched understanding of the local needs and issues. The Cypress Hills-Fulton bid formation effort began in 2020 and involved numerous meetings and consultations with local stakeholders throughout the planning and outreach phases. After an extensive outreach effort and close coordination with all key parties, SBS determined that the documented support among all stakeholders, including 50% of the area's total assessed value, was sufficient to submit an application to the City Council. Even with major challenges of COVID-19 pandemic, the Cypress Hills Steering Committee was able to sustain their outreach effort in their district. In addition to district-wide mailing, Steering Committee meetings was also able to directly connect with stakeholders through direct phone calls and undertaking one-on-one meetings, developing an even more personal connection with their constituents in moving this effort forward. In addition to Cypress Hills-Fulton bid formation, the Long Island City bid is seeking approval to extend its existing boundaries. The extension of the Long Island City bid will provide services to a new eastern sub-district. This sub-district will encompass the Industrial Business Zone, the IBZ, east of Sunnyside Yards, and two additional commercial corridors, which has seen a substantial increase in pedestrian traffic as this area has become the fourth central business district in New York City. The boundaries of the existing north and south sub-districts would also be extended as part of this expansion. Expanding the existing bid will ensure supplemental services, streetscape improvements, and marketing advocacy are reaching greater parts of the neighborhood, as well as surrounding, as well as the area surrounding the original bid district. As required by law, Cypress Hills-Fulton and Long Island City Steering Committees mail summaries to the City Council resolution no less than 10 days and no more than 30 days before today's hearing to property owners and tenants of the proposed districts. Furthermore, SBS arranged for the publication of a copy of the summary of the resolution at least once in city records. Additionally, I would like to acknowledge and thank Councilmember Nurse for her support for the Cypress Hills bid formation, as well as the support of Councilmember Wan for the Long Island City bid expansion effort. Lastly, I would like to acknowledge the representation of the bid formation and expansion efforts are present here today to testify and address any specific questions that I'm unable to answer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, now we're going to open up for public testimony, thanks to SBS. I want to remind members of the public, this is a government proceeding, and decorum must be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times unless you are at the dais testifying. The witness table is reserved only for those who testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Furthermore, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but they may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the official record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, just make sure you filled out one of those appearance slips with the Sergeant-at-Arms, and you wait to be recognized. Once recognized, you'll have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic, Introduction 898 and Introduction 906. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, just provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You also may email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov, and you can do that within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings are not accepted, only written testimony. I'm now going to call our panel, Juan Diaz, Michelle Nurgberger, Chief Sam Sane, and William Ruiz. William Ruiz. Good morning, everybody. Want to start on the left? Just say your name, and then you can start your testimony. Make sure your mic's on.
My name is Juan Diaz.
Go ahead, you can begin.
Okay. Okay, my name is Juan Diaz. I am a co-chair of the Cypress Hills-Fulton bid, along with Mr. Chief Sam Sane. I am a business and property owner. My business is ABI Multi-Service located at 2836 Fulton Street. The purpose of my participation this morning on this forum is to inform you of the importance of the Cypress Hills-Fulton bid, which, in my opinion, would be of great importance to the community. So for the last four years, a group of individuals, including myself, has worked tirelessly in order to communicate the community and the corridor, the importance of the Cypress Hills-Fulton bid. So as an outreach, here are some of the things that we have done over the last four years. We have sent a total of 3,484 letters to different people in the community in English and Spanish. We also have made available 254 links through website. We have made 870 in-person visits. In those activities, we have used even a person bilingual in English and Mandarin. So we offer over 40 personal events, even in the middle of the COVID pandemic, COVID-19. Finally, I would like to inform all of you that in the 80s, I was a tenant at 2980 Fulton Street. Today, I'm the owner of that misused property, married my wife on that property. And I'm telling you, the difference between back in the 80s and 90s and 2000, the difference is huge today. It's a much better corridor, it's a much better location. However, with the Cypress Hills-Fulton bid, we will understand that this is going to be much better, and that's why I urge all of you to continue to support the Cypress Hills-Fulton bid, because it's a chance that we just get where we're going to get. I really want to thank all of you for your time and effort, and just have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Yeah, just say your name, and you can begin.
Sure. Good afternoon, esteemed members of the City Council and our own honorable Sandy Nurse. My name is Michelle Nugabauer. I'm the Executive Director of the Cypress Hills Local Development Corporation. I'm here to testify wholeheartedly and enthusiastically for the establishment of the bid on Fulton Street in Cypress Hills, East New York, Brooklyn. Our non-for-profit community development corporation was founded by a group of visionary residents and merchants, most of whom had their businesses on Fulton Street, and they were really angry in the early 1980s and frustrated by a slew of store closing, poor city services, redlining, abandonment, and arson. And they came together to demand an end to that bank redlining and to call on the city for more investments. So fast forward 40 years later, these small immigrant-owned mom-and-pop businesses have survived and thrived through the abandonment era, the crack era, and most recently COVID-19. They have organized like I've never seen organizing before in our community through their business partners, Merchants Association and the Bid Steering Committee, to put forward their vision for Fulton Street, which is a vision that includes increased safety, not necessarily more policing, but increased safety, cleaner streets, more promotions, and more entrepreneurship. The merchants themselves came up with the Affordable Assessment Formula. They have mobilized with incredible commitment and energy. They've knocked on doors, made thousands of calls, and with Councilmember Nurse, organized countless cleanups, graffiti removals, tree care events, and the list goes on and on. They're really tireless, and so everybody in the neighborhood knows about the bid. I would say this is very much a grassroots effort from hundreds of merchants and residents who are advocating to stay in their neighborhood. This is an anti-gentrification bid, and it will immediately improve our community. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Council. My name is William Ruiz. I don't have an extensive testimony, but what I am going to tell you comes from, straight from my heart. I am not only a property owner, I've also lived in other properties in the East New York Cypress Hills section of Brooklyn. I have to say that our wonderful City Councilwoman, Sandy Nurse, has done an amazing job within the short time that she's been with us as a City Council, and hopefully she could go into bigger and better things in her political career. I have to say that what my counterparts here are saying are absolutely true, and I go a little further back. I go back as far as the late 70s, when I lived in Bushwick, and I used to travel to East New York and get chased by the Italians, because, you know, I was a little darker than everybody else, and it was okay. It was a wonderful, wonderful neighborhood. It was beautiful. And I moved back into East New York about, I'm going to go back about maybe 25 years ago, give or take, and I've seen the transformation. I've seen it go up and down, up and down, and I have to say that with the City Council, Sandy Nurse and her predecessors also did a wonderful job in trying to maintain East New York. So I am saying to you, it is important, very important, please, to please vote yes for the bid, because I didn't think there was going to be a change until they brought it to my attention, and I was very pleased to hear that there was going, they were trying to do a change in East New York. If anybody in this chamber has ever been to East New York, and if you haven't, please do so, it's all open. It's a place where there's a lot of beauty in it, there's a lot of fantastic people that want to maintain the credibility to this neighborhood. So thank you so much, and I guess I went over my two minutes. Sorry.
Thank you.
Good day, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Council, and our very own Sandy Nurse. My name is Chief Sam Sane. I'm the owner of the Caribbean Restaurant on the corner of Fulton and Norwood, Roti and the Run, and I'm also property owner. I own multiple properties on the Fulton Street corridor. I'm the co-chair of the Cypress Hills Fulton Street bid, along with Juan Diaz. I'm testifying in favor for the Cypress Hills Fulton Street bid, which runs from Van Sickle Lynn to Elder's Lane, consisting of approximately 325 property. This bid, like many others in the NYC area, will bring a positive foot traffic to the Fulton corridor. In return, small businesses will see an increase in revenue, will trickle down to providing a better livelihood for our family. This bid will clean up the Fulton corridor and make it safer and brighter. Just imagine, just for the cost of a cup of coffee a day, that's what us as property owners will be responsible for. The average size of a storefront property on Fulton will cost approximately around $600 annually, which will be, I'm sure, like myself, will be passed on to the merchant on the ground floor or an aisle cover part of it as well. I live on Fulton Street since 1982. My parents been there since 1976. I grew up there. I went to PS 108, IS 302. I got married in the neighborhood. I still live there. My kids grew up there. So this is a place where I live, and I have no intentions of leaving. I just want to wake up in the morning and see a safer, brighter neighborhood, like you drive through Freshman Road or any other neighborhood that has a bid on the, in the NYC area, and it's something I would love to see on Fulton Street. Thank you, and hope you guys vote yes for us. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you all very much for coming. Okay, now we have testimony from Laura Rothrock and Alvarez Simonette.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Laura Rothrock. I'm the President of the Long Island City Partnership and Executive Director of the LIC Bid, and thank you for your consideration on the LIC bid expansion proposal and the opportunity to speak today. The Long Island City bid was created in 2005 and expanded in 2017, and we created two sub-districts with separate assessment budgets, which act as one bid. The current bid service area is along Jackson Avenue, Queens Plaza, 44th Drive, and Vernon Boulevard. The bid provides supplemental services such as sanitation, horticulture, and beautification, and it also leverages the work of the partnership, which keeps the bid's administrative costs low and allows us to tap into our business assistance and marketing efforts of the partnership. Long Island City is the fastest-growing neighborhood in New York City, both by population and by jobs. With an increase in foot traffic in the neighborhood, even during the pandemic, we've heard from stakeholders outside of the current bid boundaries about the need for services on additional blocks in the neighborhood. The plan that we're presenting today is the culmination of three years of feasibility studies, needs assessments, a massive outreach campaign, and dozens of steering committee, community board, and public meetings. Our proposed bid expansion would add additional lots to existing north and south sub-districts and add an east sub-district to the area east of Sunnyside Yards. We're proposing that the north and south sub-district expansion area have the same level of service and assessment formula as the current bid, but would include a reduced rate on some of the side streets while, while still maintaining the same level of quality. With this expansion, the bid's budget would increase to just over $2 million while maintaining a low assessment rate, while still addressing the needs of the rapidly growing neighborhood. After our mailings, public meetings, presentations, email outreach, phone calls, Zooms, and going door-to-door, and social media posts and signage in the neighborhood, we've received broad-based support from business and property owners of different sizes, as well as residents and nonprofit institutions. So we thank you for your consideration and are happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alvarez Simonette. I am the Chief of Staff at Lady M. Confections, a retail bakery and light manufacturer best known for 20-layer milk crepe cake. Our corporate headquarters is located at 4310 Ninth Street in the northern expansion area. As a tenant in the neighborhood, I am here today to express our full support for the bid expansion. Lady M. began back in 2001 with a simple eight-person kitchen, which has now grown to over 300 employees nationally and more than 1,000 team members across five countries. We have weathered crises from 9/11 to the financial crisis to COVID, and through our resolve in great public and private partnerships, we have thrived. Since the pandemic, we have seen inflationary pressures tied to food and wages return, and that has made it more difficult to manage our business. This includes ensuring safety and care for our employees, particularly, particularly during a walk-through our improvement, our industrial business zone. As our name suggests, Lady M. employs a workforce that is 75% female and 93% people of color. Our employees are hardworking and remind me of my own mother, who brought me to this country with little in our pockets and worked day and night to provide me with a solid education. Our daytime staff take the early the early, early trains. Our nighttime staff take the after-midnight trains. They walk through a dark and desolate IBZ, which consists of dirty sidewalks, limited trash receptacles, poor lighting, and little to no maintenance. The result is a perception that safety is not important and far from a priority from the city. In an evolving neighborhood, once known only for the Citibank Building, Long Island City has emerged as the fastest-growing neighborhood in the city, has attracted event spaces, businesses, hotels, and other things. However, if you sit within the IBZ, which sits outside the bid, you do not benefit from this evolving beautification, and you do not benefit from this natural growth. Expanding the bid services will benefit our businesses and improve the character of the neighborhood. It will promote the walkability of the area and allow our company to better attract and retain employees who will feel a better sense of safety. While no business seeks higher costs, we have conducted a thorough cost-benefit analysis in collaboration with our landlord to examine the proposed assessment values. The net result is a view wholeheartedly shared by both, that the proposed expenditures are fair and equitable, and lastly, in a new city of yes, extending the boundaries of this district is a key imperative as it fosters inclusivity, equitable economic development, and a more cohesive and prosperous community fabric. Thank you.
Tell me more about this cake.
Yes. It is a 20-layer crepe cake.
20 layers?
20-layer crepe cake. It has a light pastry cream in between, and if you have our original, our signature one, it's brulee'd on top. Our second most famous one is one that has fresh imported matcha powder from Japan.
Is there any of that cake in the chambers today?
There's, we have a location in World Trade Center and continue to sell it day and night.
Right on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Okay, now we have some folks testifying on Zoom. We're going to start with Albert Scott. You may begin, Albert.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Today is just a great day to see the dynamic team of the bid formation actually coming together. But let me just start by saying good afternoon to the esteemed council members and the committee members. I just have to take time off work on my lunch break right now to say I am wholeheartedly in support of this bid. As a community resident and stakeholder in East New York, born and raised and see the different transformation, I personally would make this bid contribute to the economic vitality of East New York. I'm urging that this dynamic committee vote in favor of this dynamic bid formation to continue their dynamic work in this community. Outside of the dynamic beautification projects, engaging local community members, one key thing that resonated the most was during the height of the pandemic. Small business stores were closed. There was confusion in the community. They not had access just to the simple mask and sanitation. It was this dynamic bid steering committee that actually braved those elements, walking the entire block from Fulton Street, initially from Pennsylvania, all the way down through the corridor, handing out the necessary equipment, and also educating not only small businesses, but the residents, and especially encouraging the small business owners not to give up hope. I witnessed them actually able to assist and help grow some of these entities in the sense where, not only through the cleanup, but actually through those efforts, actually increased the necessary foot traffic, which translated to necessary economic benefits on a whole. So again, I'm just urging this dynamic committee to please vote for this.
Your time has expired.
And the necessary support for this dynamic organization onwards and upwards in community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Albert. Now we have testimony from Stephen Kim. You may begin.
Okay, sorry, I was muted. Good afternoon. My name is Stephen Kim, and I'm the Director of Design and Development at Inova Property Group. We've been the property owners in the Long Island City neighborhood for over eight years, and currently own three buildings within the east expansion area. As a property owner in the neighborhood, I'm testifying to express my full support for the LIC bid expansion. Our tenants include NYCHA and YCAP, that hosts hundreds of employees, and our new mixed-use development on Bourbon Avenue will be opening this summer, which will add additional high-volume foot traffic to the neighborhood. Currently, NYCHA has approximately 750 employees with some 24/7 operations, and the YCAP, with a construction material distributor, has about 25 employees. Over the last eight years, we have witnessed that the businesses in the area have shifted from strictly heavy industrial to light industrial office and the mixed-use commercial, with the pedestrian confronting businesses resulting in a steep increase in foot traffic. The quality of life issues have become even more pronounced as well. Currently, there are no trash cans, graffiti chronically occurs, sidewalk gets icy in the winter, and weeds are overgrown throughout the district. As a property owner, we take care of the area surrounding our buildings. However, the major transportation hubs nearby lack sufficient services. The existing services are not meeting the needs of the neighborhood, and the bid is needed to resolve the host of quality of life issues. This area is a transportation hub located between the highways, two stops on the subway from the Midtown Manhattan and the LIR stop. We see a great opportunity for businesses to grow and thrive, but these services are needed to make that happen, which bid expansion will provide. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, we're going to leave the vote open for Councilmember Brooks Powers. Thank you.